Call the meeting to order. And we'll forego the flag salute since we've done that earlier tonight. Counselor Bowlin is on duty tonight, so he won't be here. And would City Clerk Kizer please take one?
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Grissel?
Here.
Counselor Reese Camp?
Here.
And Counselor Scott?
Here.
Okay, on the consent calendar, we just have the agenda tonight. Is there any corrections or additions to the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda's approved. And citizens' comments, period. The council welcomes all respectful comments regarding city's business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in, and stating the name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. The council may make -- take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute written comments if you have those. And just so you know, we have a timer light. It's five minutes, it'll be green, and then for four minutes at the last minute, it'll turn yellow, just to give you an idea of where you're at in your time.
Can we cut the speaker down to about two minutes?
I can change that, sure.
I second that.
That's what it is.
For the right price, we could...
Shelley, chamber director and citizen of Lebanon. I worked for 23 years for the Southern California Edison Company in customer service. And one of the biggest parts of what we did, besides outages and helping people switch their breakers back on, was deal with credit issues and the billing. And we were highly regulated by the PUC, so we had to be really careful, and everything had to be timed purposely. The last thing we wanted to do, we send a serviceman out to the field to either disconnect power or hang a door hanger, saying that they're going to do it in 24 hours, because it's so costly and expensive. So, we did a lot of extensive working with customers to have, what do you call it, extensions, and they would call in. And let me give you what I wanted to sort of go over quickly here. And looking at your timeframe, Dean is right, if you let the bill go too long, it'll be so big they can't tackle it. But there are other ways of doing the notification that I think would save you money. For instance, your bill comes out the first day of the month, and then you say that the 15th of the month, the bill becomes past due. So, on the 18th, when the late fee is assessed, what you might do is consider mailing an overdue notice. And the way an overdue notice looks will get their attention more so than anything. But if you don't want to spend that much money, the next thing you could do, when you get to the point where you're already getting your new billing that's coming out, by the way, when the overdue notice goes out, unless you're against the idea, suggest that they contact you and make payment arrangements. We found that if people called and committed to a certain date, "I don't get paid till such and such," but my husband gets his check such and such, and I promise I'll be in it the next day, and the representative writes it down on the account, keeps record of it, then they've made a commitment. And especially in a community this size where everybody knows each other, that commitment's probably pretty important. Now, there'll be people that won't keep it, but when the double bill comes out, so you've got the new bill and you have the old one that's still unpaid, that's when you plop an urgent notice into the bill that's being mailed out. So, you don't have to pay any additional postage. But this urgent notice is black and red, and it's really urgent. It's making them know that the next step, you will lose your power, or in this case, your water. And it's scary. Now, you may not have to do as many door hangers that way. It's so expensive to have your personnel hanging door hangers when you can do it either with notices or payment arrangements. Then I would suggest you keep a history of the arrangement, so that the next time the person calls back next month, hey, I'm engaged in the same story, you can refer back to it. We found many of our customers did have that. They were telling the truth. They always got paid such and such a dates. They also told us horrible stories, and it turned out to be false and stuff like that. But you keep a record and you let them know. And then, I have to say, that this is a city. It's not a utility like a public utility where they can complain to the PUC. And you're in business to serve the people of this community. And the discussion of how someone gets their social security check and how they use it is none of our business, because that may be all the money they get. We do need to try to work with them. I don't think it would be that difficult to offer payment arrangements when they call in. And then if they do not keep their word, then go ahead and process the disconnect. I think you'll cut down on a lot of your door hanging, and your people will not be so busy. And you're also making an attempt to work with your people that pay our jobs. I mean, that really is what we're here for, is to serve our community. I think a little bit of customer service needs to... the yellow means shut up, Shelley. Customer service is really important, and you're doing so well with the perception of how you're received by your constituents. But I think that if we could take some steps on that, and what I would look at is a 30 to 40 day range for the completion of the credit process. And a lot more letters or notices and less door hanging. I think you'll find that it'll turn out... But I also, with him, they should not be allowed to get into a double bill, because it's just a bigger hole that they may all fall in that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good comments.
I'm Scott, and I hate to follow Shelley, because I have to agree with her. I hate to admit that publicly.
This may be important, so let us...
Thank you. The, yeah, what she suggested makes sense to me. But there's two things that I have concern about. Well, number one is, in this day and age, it seems like that a lot of bills could be sent electronically. You know, just about everybody has emails. And, you know, it takes some time to get that thing set up. And also receive payment electronically. Now, I realize you're processing a bank graph through the bank, but I'm talking about the individual sending it directly to the city. That seems to be... Now, I have a business here in town that's shut down, and we had water service. It got cut off, because we didn't get the bill paid on time. I went down and tried to make arrangements to leave it cut off, because we're not using anything. And the only way they said that could be done is to remove the meter. They want a fee for that, and they want a fee to hook it back up. I said, "Well, you got it locked out with a lock, just leave it that way." It can't get any water that way. And they said, "No, you can't do it." I was out there the other day mowing the lawn, and I noticed a new cover on our meter box. I look at that, they got a new meter put in. So, they took the old meter out and put a new one in, and yet I'm getting billed every month for that, for no service. I don't need any service. And it seems like, you know, I served for 30 years as a hospital administrator. I was collecting bills from people who didn't want the service I was giving. Now, I want water service, so I'm going to pay. But you talk about tough. You try to collect something from somebody that didn't want the service to begin with, and it was thousands of dollars. So, I understand about collecting. And, but it seems like you could be a little bit more accommodating to people to meet their current needs. And that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
I'd like to thank you for accommodating and moving it to the evening, although there wasn't... we don't have a loud showing, but a short notice. So, maybe if in the water bill, there was a notice or more, that goes on to each thing that we have that's going on, that regarding the water rates goes out in the water bill. That way, the citizens' customers are informed.
We will get out a lot of information, and we'll get it out early on the public information for the next...
I am coming about the increase, and urging that we have zero increase this go around. It would have been cheaper for us back in 2010 if we had just increased our rate at 60 percent and left it at that, not to 75, 85 percent that we are facing now. You also raised the unit rates. So, how much money do you actually need? It was the council, the people, or some of the council members are still here. You raised our rate 60 percent. They didn't tell you it was going to be 75 percent. Also, at that time, we had an increase January 1st and July 1st, 3 percent each, on top of the 15 percent. So, how much money do you actually need? That's what I would like to know. Well, Art, I thought the presentation... Did you see the presentation? Yes, I did, but... I thought it was pretty clear that we don't know the answer to that. You raised it, you want 60 percent for a $25 million project. Then you were saying that the water rate, the water plant was $19 million, plus all the street projects that needed to go on. Then, Grasic back in September said it was $12 million. Or maybe we could upgrade this one here for $6 million and build another one for $6 million. When I say April 10th, you said it was $15 million. So, these rate increases were based on $25 million. Yeah, and the answer is, and that's why staff recommended no rate increase, is because we don't know what the bill's going to be. And I'm urging that we don't raise, don't raise it anymore, because you already surpassed the 60 percent. Okay? The 15 percent that you asked for on July 1st puts you way over 60 percent.
I think that's kind of a misunderstanding, because as I recall that, yes, we were talking about for 15 percent, and just to look at that, you would say roughly that was 60 percent. But we were looking at the projected income year after year. So, we, so even though it looked like 60 percent, we were counting on the revenue from that compounding each year, because we said, "Okay, this year, that brings revenue to this amount. Then the next 15 percent brings revenue to this amount." So, I think, I think from the beginning, we projected for that to compound. Whether that ended up being 75, 80 percent, it is what it is. But I think, I don't think we have more revenue because we got 75, whereas we wanted 60 or something.
I was here the night that, and there was about this many people in attendance when this first went through. And no one commented on it. I was here that night, and, but it was brought up, is that how are you going to increase it? 30-30, 60 percent, or 15 at a time? So, that was no revenue projected out in the future there. That's basically your 60 percent increase. And at the same time, we're talking about door hangers, people not being able to pay their bills, struggling and everything else. People aren't watering their lawns, the town's getting browner. So, I think it's important that our citizenship customers get informed about the increases, and we at least know what we're going to be getting into. We have no idea what the design's going to be. We're not even sure. Nobody's there. The engineer's not sure what it's going to be. We don't know if you can fix a wind downtown or not. So, before any more increases, and before you think about 5 percent increase or another 10 percent increase, sure, if we need that, the citizens of here will step up. Stepped up for a library, stepped up for Justice Center, have no problem stepping up. We'll step up if it's needed. But be truthful about how much money you actually need. And that's why I'm urging no increase this year, and maybe next year. You should have enough money already. Unfortunately, fortunately, we had the housing crisis. If the housing crisis had not happened, we would be in a world of hurt right now for water. We would not have enough water. We'd probably be rationing right now.
I don't think so, but I'm not going to sit down and... I can't right off the top of my head here, Art, give you all the numbers...
According to Dan Grasic, we were this close to failing.
Yeah, at one point.
At one summer, and here we are. If we had the population increase, they increased homes, lawns, gardens, factories, hotels, everything else, we would be in a crisis.
I don't agree, but that's okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Art.
Thanks, Art.
Any other comments from citizens? Okay. Move on to our agenda. Approval to award the project on Fifth Street, the reservoir upgrade. Ron Whitlock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I promise to keep this shirt. What you have before you, I think we, Linda, did you hand up? The memo from the, basically outlines the bids that we got for the Fifth Street Water Reservoir. We received six bids, and you can see that the lowest price was a company called SSC Construction. They're from Corona, California. We did have two protests to this bid. Trey and I have looked at those, and he has responded, and we've found both of those to be not really warranted. It's pretty typical of a project this size. They claimed a couple of things that weren't actually true, so just so council is aware. But since I have received no contact from either of those companies, once we sent the letter, staff's gone ahead and recommending award to SSC Construction for the reservoir project.
That's Corona?
Yeah.
Corona, not Corona.
Okay. Yeah. I didn't know a Corona.
Yeah, that's how they spelled it when they gave it to us.
Really?
Yeah. Is there an A in there?
Yeah, should be Corona. Unless there's some little tiny Corona somewhere.
Yeah, I would have probably just a typo, wouldn't be my guess.
Yeah, it must be. So, if there's any questions, I can definitely answer any. I think the reason, one of the things that probably good to note is, the engineer's estimate that was provided by OPEC is about 4.1 million. We did two different types of tanks here, which increased competition. Basically, the type of tank that we're doing, there's very few suppliers that deal with that. So, by us actually putting another type of construction technique into our bid, it actually brought us bid prices down quite a bit, is what the engineer's telling us. So, and we're pretty reputable with that.
Are you comfortable with this company?
You know what? I don't know anything about them, other than the fact that they're building a 50 million gallon reservoir in Portland right now. So, I'm guessing that our 4 million gallon, they could probably, they should be okay, based on that. They met all the qualifications. They were able to get bonding for it, so I, yeah, sure of that. I've never worked with them.
Do they have offices here in Oregon?
No, Vancouver is, Washington is the closest.
Well, unfortunately, it's not a Oregon company, but they are the low bidder, and that's the rules.
And our second low bidder was actually from Washington, so...
And you do recommend this, correct?
Correct, yes.
Do we have a motion on this? Or discussion, actually, first? Any questions?
If there is none, then I would make a motion that we approve and award the contract to SSC Construction, an amount bid of $3,374,000.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded to award the contract for the Fifth Street Reservoir Upgrades, project number 11708. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
God, I have a quick question, just parenthetical. The, because of the settlement issue and having purchased property adjacent to the existing site?
Yes.
Is that, are we going to abandon the existing site or resell the existing site?
No, we'll probably keep it. We'll keep it, you know, at some point in the future. It'll probably be worth another tank up there. With that being our highest elevation point, it'd be, you know, we'd need it at some point. Yeah. But that existing tank will come down.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approval to amend the OPEC Engineering Services contract to include Fifth Street Reservoir Upgrade. Ron?
Thank you again. What you have before you here is an amendment. It's got their statement of work and their costs, basically to do the inspection and project management for the Fifth Street Reservoir Project. Our staff will be minimally involved. I wouldn't, we would probably make daily site visits, but they wouldn't be of any length, and would do very little of any inspection. We would let our consultant handle that. That's twofold. One, the staff person I'm assigning it to is going to be extremely busy on other projects. And two, we don't have the expertise in-house to handle a lot of the inspection, so we're recommending that OPEC, they did the design for it and helped us through the bidding process, that they do the inspection, and they'll do all the special inspections that we would have to hire out as well. So, we're recommending that we amend their contract, their original contract for design to include construction and services. I can answer any questions about that.
Is 10 percent of construction cost atypical or...
Pretty standard.
Pretty standard?
Pretty standard. Yeah, for a technical project, yeah, that's pretty standard. Yeah, sometimes it's even more. Yep. It puts into perspective the cost for the engineering piece. I saw that price, I was like, ooh, wow. But that's, that's pretty standard. That's what you would typically pay. You would pay seven to eight to 10 on the design piece, as well as that much on the backside, too, for the construction. But this also includes survey, too.
As a percentage of construction costs, how does this amendment compare to the engineering, as a percentage of cost of the original project?
As compared to what they did the design for? It's about the same. I think their original contract was for somewhere around $300,000. So, we're adding, we're basically doubling that, which is pretty standard for that.
And sometimes change order kinds of things, the rate goes up, and I'm just...
Yeah, no, I mean, on a, on a design, on a professional services contract, we don't look at price anyway. It's basically, it's on qualifications basis. So, if I was to go out and hire another engineering firm to do the inspection, would it be cheaper? Maybe, maybe not.
Never bid by...
But I would feel more comfortable with that piece of infrastructure, having the person that designed it be available, and also they have some ties to the project, whereas an individual inspector may not, you know? So, it's a pretty important piece of infrastructure.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that the council amend the existing design service contract with OPEC Engineering to include the construction engineering services for the Fifth Street Reservoir Upgrades Project.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend the OPEC Engineering Services contract to include Fifth Street Reservoir Upgrade. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, this is officially John Hitt's last night, and I want to thank John publicly for all the help he's given me this past few months, and kind of getting my feet wet and kind of getting steered in the right direction. I appreciate your help, and thank you for what you've done for our city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I hope you enjoy real retirement now, and not just that kind of part-time...
Not the semi, yeah.
And also introduce John Nelson, if you don't know him. He's our new interim city manager. He started this week, and John's been working with him closely, and he's getting to meet with all the different departments. And he's setting up meetings with each of us, so he can talk to everybody. And just very happy to have you onboard.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, John. Would you like to say anything?
Oh, I'm just happy to be here, and this is day three. The utility billing discussion hasn't scared me from not coming back.
I'm not worried about that.
In the morning, just a pleasure to be here, and I'm very impressed with the staff and the services that I've been introduced to this week. It's good to be here.
Great, thank you. And I have a comment. I attended the Lebanon Police Department Citizens Academy graduation last night, and what a, what a great thing that our department does. The volunteers, the staff, chief, lieutenant captain, all the volunteers that are out there. Seven weeks, the citizens came in, there was 29 that went through that group. And I got to watch a slideshow, handed out the diplomas, and what a neat group. And one of the comments was, is how much the staff shared and opened up to them. And I'll tell you, it touched people's lives. It was really an impressive, impressive program, and so that was really neat to see. That's all I have. Citizen, or, I'm sorry, items from council now. Any, do you guys have anything to talk about? I'm sure Jason would, but he's not here, so he doesn't get to talk.
Thank God.
Okay, seeing none, and we'll go one last time. We have citizens' comments. If there's anything else the citizens want to comment on, they have another opportunity. Yes, John?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, since this is my last meeting, if I could have your indulgence, and the rest of the councils. And just to let you know, my last day at work will either be Monday, the 29th, or Tuesday, the 30th. So, yeah, obviously, the end is very, very near. And I want to comment, I've, of course, known John Nelson for a long time, but never in the capacity of a coworker until now. And I want to assure you that he is a very quick study. He's ramping up extremely quickly to this position, and I know he'll do an outstanding job. I've already told a couple people already that the differences between him and me are that I'm a little bit taller, and I have a little bit more hair, but he's a whole lot smarter. So, you all do very well, very well. And also, you know, I threatened Lyndy Kizer that this would be my farewell address, you know, maybe three hours, something like that. No, not quite that long. I did happen to come across, as I was cleaning out some papers at my desk, the audit that was done in the year 2000, just a few weeks after I arrived on the job. And so, I just kind of thumb through there and looked at some of the, you know, what I call the big four funds, which is the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Wastewater Fund, and the Northwest U.R.D. And I was happy to report that, happy to observe, I should say, that, that those funds are up about $7 million in total fund balances from the year 2000, which is, which represents about a 30, 30 percent increase in cash fund balances of those four funds taken together, taken as a unit, in relation to the fund revenues that were true in the year 2000, comparing fund, cash balances with fund revenues in 2000 versus now. Total debt, total city debt is, is down 1.3 percent from what it was in the year 2000, and that's in spite of the fact of a large general obligation bond that was approved by the voters in the year 2000. And our current indebtedness represents about 1.3 percent less as a percent of our total assessed value, or if we look at the revenue side of things, the same thing. So, again, I think that's pretty good progress, and particularly get in light of about a $14 million bond that we sold just a few years ago. At the same time, I'm happy to report that our services have, have expanded. In the year 2000, we had one part-time dial-a-bus. We now have three dial-buses. We also have an increase in both sworn officers and total officers, both in total numbers, but also as a percent of population. We have more officers and sworn, or more total police personnel and more sworn officers as a percent of our population today than we did in the year 2000. Similarly, our library staff has grown from 3.75 to 6.75, and our library is open far longer hours than it was in the year 2000. And obviously, anybody that was ever in the old library compares to the new library, not only is the facility light years better, but a much larger collection and a much more current collection than what we had in the year 2000. Same thing with senior center activities. Senior center activities are much more robust. Looking at the senior center report from 2000 in comparison today, our senior center is vastly more active, and again, providing level of services that are far in excess of the year 2000. I do want to thank the city council, particularly the city council that hired me. I hope none of them, a couple of them are still here today, don't... I hope none of them, a couple of them are still here today, don't have any regrets about that decision. But also the city councils that been, that I've served in the 13 years that I've been here. Happy to report that I, in that 13 years, only missed two city council meetings. I don't have a total number of city council meetings I've attended, unlike Ken Tooms in his last, his comments when he left in December, he had that total number, I don't remember what it was, was, it was a big number. But I have been attending council meetings ever since 1985, and when I had a position as an economic development officer in Washington State for about seven years, I actually attended almost all, I missed a few, but almost all the city council meetings of four separate cities where I was the economic development officer. So I've attended quite a few over the years. Whatever that number is, it's a pretty big number. I also want to thank our staff. I think, I know we've had some, a fair number of changes in, in the last year or so in our staff, but I, and I appreciate John Nelson's comment. I think we have an excellent staff in place. I think the staff is coalescing, is, even though some of those staff members are fairly new, coalescing very, very well as a team. I want to appreciate, most of all, or thank, most of all, because she's had to endure me the most of almost anyone, and that's Lynda Kaser, who's been very patient with having to try to read my handwriting over all these years, deal with my spilled coffee, and deal with lost papers, and, you know, none of that's her fault. She always tried to get me organized, but it was a tough job. But, so, but anyway, the entire staff that I've worked with, the entire time I've here, I've enjoyed and appreciated, but especially appreciate and enjoy the current staff that we have. I think they're just really an exceptional group. And I say that based on my entire history with city government dating back to 1985. Also want to make sure that everyone knows I'm still available. I'm happy to help the city in any way that I can. I promised Shelley Garrett that after my last day, I was going to walk over to the Chamber of Commerce and join as a private citizen. So still want to be active with the community. I think that some great things have happened, and even greater things will happen in our future. I also would like to comment on some of the organizations that have been great to work with. I mentioned the Chamber of Commerce. The Lynn County has been great to work with over the years. Lynn Benton Community College, great people, very supportive. Some of the businesses that we've had here in time, like, in town, like Antech, Seminole Health Services, just a, a great group of business community nonprofit organizations that I've enjoyed working with over the years. Most of all, thank our long-suffering citizens and their faithfulness in paying their taxes, which in turn paid my salary, and I and my family are very grateful for that. And it's been great people here, a real pleasure, and, you know, just really the highlight, I would say, of my entire working career, without any doubt, I would say this, and highlight of my entire working career, serving the citizens of Lebanon for the, for the last 13 years. I'd just like to make a comment of what I think is the most significant event since I've been here, and there've been a lot of great ones, when we opened the Justice Center and the new library, when Lowe's Regional Distribution Center went, was developed, when we opened up the four-lane highway there, that was one of the first things that happened after I got here, Highway 34. A lot of wonderful things have happened, but the one I, I vote as the most significant long-term thing that happened in my 13 years here is when we had the formal opening of Comp Northwest, Western University of Health Sciences. I think that will have the biggest positive long-term impact on this community of anything that's happened in my 13 years, so. And the great people out there, they're another group besides the many others that I've mentioned, that, that's really, has been a real joy actually to work with, and they're extremely supportive of our town and our community and our citizens. So with that, again, thank you all very much, and I look forward and I'm very happy and excited about the great future that I know this town's going to have. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your patience, and thank you for not running the red light on me. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I do want to tell you, John, if you do not pay your chamber dues within 30 days, she will have a door hanger on, she's very aggressive collecting.
And we will be aggressively enforcing the door hanger on you, yes, absolutely.
That would be good.
Anything else from council? With that, meeting's adjourned.